We can move it on.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
Okay, all right, hold order. I hereby declare the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting is hereby called an order on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven thirty-four. I had a quick notice that this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and courier newspapers, and by filing a copy of the municipal clerk. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what this board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and a decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff, announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past ten thirty PM in any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or electronic devices so that they are not, do not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance. Please read this now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronia?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Genakis?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Watts?
Here.
Ms. Collins is excused this evening, Vice Chairman Grosskoff?
Here.
Chairman Grett?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, now, let's see what we have coming up. Meeting minutes, June eighteenth, July second, August twentieth, and September third.
Carried.
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 Yeah, I thought so, I hadn't seen. Okay, the voting on those will be carried to a later specified time, next meeting or probably next week. Resolutions?
Carried.
Carried. Okay, the resolution, Theresa Gallo and Kyle Henry are both carried.
Just so everyone knows, they're basically done, it's just that we finalized them this morning, we'll give everybody time to review them, but yeah, they'll definitely be ready at the next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, that brings us to the applications. Block one zero nine zero one, lot seventeen, zone R four, known as four seventy-one Valley Road, application number two four dash one one Z. Charles, how do you pronounce that?
Mahia.
Mahia. Applicant proposes to construct in addition to the rear of an existing single-family dwelling. I see the applicant is present.
I am.
You don't have to push the button, in fact, don't push the button, because that mutes it.
It should be, the topic, Charles, make sure, just tap the mic, make sure it's working. Yep, you're good.
He's good.
The thing shuts it off if you hit the button.
Astounding, it never does.
Yeah, well, anyway, okay, so, I think every, well, go ahead.
Do you want me to swear? Yeah, I'll do my.
Do the legal formalities and then swear.
Doing what you guys pay me for, Mr. Chairman, okay. So, a couple of points, first, Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out, as far as the notice is concerned, I deem it to be both timely, to have been timely served and to have sufficient content to give the board jurisdiction here and decide the case. It was sent by certified mail, the owners of property within two hundred feet of the subject property on September sixth, twenty twenty-four, and also published in the Daily Record on, again, September sixth, twenty twenty-four. With that, I could swear in the applicant?
And our experts.
And our experts as well. Now, will all of you please raise your right hand? Ms., are you going to be testifying? You are, too, okay. All right, do all of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right, so, Mr. Mahia, why don't you tell the board why you're here? Actually, can I get your address real quick?
Yes, Charles Mahia, four seventy-one Valley Road. Good evening, members of the planning board, we're here.
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment.
Not tomorrow.
Double your pay tomorrow. We propose to just bump out our kitchen over our existing patio.
Okay.
Just a, just a small addition.
Why, explain to us what the need for that, I mean, why, why is, why did that come about that you wanted to do?
We feel our kitchen is, we've outgrown our kitchen. We have two teenagers at the house with a lot of friends over and around a small tiny island, so it's, we'd like a little room for them, for ourselves, and, you know, improve the value of the home as well.
I see it's a two-story home, and you're just doing the first floor?
Correct, just the first floor, yes.
So you're gonna have like a shed roof coming out?
Exactly.
Did you have a chance to look at our expert report?
I did, yes.
Is there anything in there, I know there's some questions, there might, there usually are questions in our reports, um, do you have any questions?
I do not.
You didn't have any questions, though, I didn't see any. How about our engineer?
No, no, pretty straightforward, exempt from stormwater management.
What was that?
It's exempt from our stormwater management mitigation requirement.
Okay.
Particularly in that, you know, while they are asking for the variance in coverage, it's over an existing non-conforming area, so it's not exacerbating anything more, and it's still under the thresholds of our minor development security.
Okay, so, it's being built over what exactly?
It's over the patio and existing deck, so it.
What's gonna happen with that area?
Oh, it'll just be covered.
But you don't intend to build another deck or another patio?
No, no, that's, we're fine with as is, we just want an addition to the kitchen, and like.
Is it gonna be door to the outside from the kitchen?
The same patio sliding doors we have will just be replaced, but we moved outward, obviously.
Well, what's gonna be at the end of that, on the lawn? Is there gonna be a patio there, or what's gonna be?
Everything that's on the grounds now will remain.
Oh, so you're not taking up the entire area?
No, no, it's only coming out seven, seven by thirty-five point four feet.
And what's there?
The patio and deck.
Well, what's the deck size now?
Oh.
He's asking how far does the patio project from, yeah, like how much space?
Seven feet into the deck.
Seven feet into.
What's the deck?
The deck is about fourteen.
Okay, so you still gotta have seven feet of the deck?
Of deck, correct.
Okay, so you don't need to extend that?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just making your deck a little smaller to, you're sacrificing your depth to your kitchen?
Exactly.
Any members of the board, questions?
Yes. I was kind of thinking the same way you were, just wanted to be sure that the applicant is sure that you won't need that outside space, because people use the outside space a lot.
When you say outside space.
Meaning the deck and the patio area, it's, you're reducing that by quite a bit. Do you use it right now?
We don't use the patio, because it's just pavers, but we use the deck quite a bit, and that area is not being minimized by a great amount.
By set, by half, so?
Just, just one section of it, not, not totally cut in half.
So you're comfortable that after this construction's done, you don't need to come back before the same board and ask for a variance for extending the depth?
That's not in the plans or the budget.
Okay.
Well, you know, the reason, let me ask you, let me explain why we do that, because a lot of times applicants don't realize that maybe they should be doing something different or more, and if you don't ask for it now, you have to come all back again and do again.
At big expense, to this part of it, and time.
And time.
Right, and time, so we just wanna make sure that you get what you want and what you need.
Yes.
Okay, we've had applicants change their minds after asking, after we've asked them questions, based on, they've thought about it sometimes, you know, so, that's why I wanna make sure. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
If you don't mind, just to hop back to our board engineers memo, that came out today. Joe, I noted a few conditions you had in there, comments three point two, three point five, three point six, and then four point one. Three point two would be that we'd be requiring the applicants to get a written signed statement from the owner of Jason Lot forty to verify that fence.
There's, in the rear yard, there's a slight encroachment of the chain link fence?
Correct.
That, then I see the neighbor's fence is a different type and style, so I assume that it is your fence.
Yes, I had to do some digging, I spoke with Mr. Mike Wiggins of one sixty-six King, and I, because that fence was there when we moved in, so I didn't know if they had put in the fence or our, the previous owners, and it was our previous owners. I spoke to him verbally, and he is okay with the location of the fence, and he will provide written statement going forward.
So you can just provide, yeah, just a simple statement letter that says he's okay with the fence as it stands?
Yes.
Okay, and then, three, five, we may be able to make this go, is, the bump out of the kitchen, is that intended to have, I didn't see it in the architectural, gutters over that area, or would that just drain off, off the ledge of that roof down into the?
There will be one on the, on the end, there's currently nothing there, because it's just horizontal, but there is supposed to be one.
Okay, so that, that condition would be for that roof leader to drain to the same location as the nearest roof leader on this, on the corner of your house?
Okay.
So it goes to the same area, it's from, it's from the same, and it doesn't change drainage pattern?
Understood.
Anything else?
I mean, soil erosion in the three six arguably really won't even be necessary based on the work being done over?
Like, over existing?
Over the existing area, so we can remove three six.
Three point six is, and then four point one, outside agency approvals to the extent necessary?
Yeah, to the extent necessary, they have submitted to the county planning board?
Yep.
I saw that in the application, so we'll defer, you know, the front yard fence or anything else to the county if they have any objections to it for sightlines.
Right, right, thanks, Joe. So, Mr. Mahia, so essentially, the reason we went through all that is any condition of approval, if the board were to grant your application, we would ask that you just comply with those three items, you, you know, get that statement from your, your neighbor about this fence, maintain the existing drainage patterns, and then just make sure you get all your outside agency approvals, but you'd have to get any way regardless.
Of course.
Yeah, okay, so you're complying with all those, just wanted to be quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to make sure we got all that fleshed out, and I just note that there were, those didn't have any comments or any conditions that could be interpreted from her memo, so.
What, if you don't, what's the current width of your, of your kitchen now?
Um, that's a tough one, it's probably, let's see.
You can estimate.
Twenty feet, twenty by seven.
And this entire, it's going to, just to make the kitchen bigger, you're not going to change any interior?
The, correct, the interior will not come out, we're just, the extension specifically will be a mudroom and kitchen.
Mudroom and?
Yes.
So, you don't currently have a mudroom?
We do not.
Okay, so that, you have, what, what do you enter into from your garage?
Right into the, a small laundry area that goes into the kitchen.
That's almost like a pseudo-mudroom, okay.
It's muddy, if that's what you mean.
But I mean, this is just gonna be a mudroom and a rusted kitchen?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes.
Is there currently a variance for the overage, the twenty-eight point three one, whatever that is?
So, due to more digging, the, I found an old survey, and the patio did not exist, and I believe that's what took the previous owner over the twenty-five percent coverage. So we're currently standing, like you mentioned, existing non-conforming at twenty-eight point three, this addition doesn't change it at all, it's still, would still be twenty-eight
Right, but there's no variance to get you to the twenty-eight point three?
That was not, I did not, we were not.
That was how you purchased the property, and it wasn't done by variance on the construction, the initial construction or?
As far as I know, there was no previous application for such.
So now we're making it legal, basically?
Question, and I noticed on the application that floor area, it says seventeen hundred allowed, or is that just required, that's, that's just required, right, you can be more than that?
Right, the minimum is.
The minimum is seventeen hundred, okay, because I noticed they're going up on that, but that's, that's.
Yeah, no, that's not, yeah, they don't want a little house.
Yeah, I know, I didn't seem.
Any other questions?
One more, Mr. Chairman, actually.
Yes.
Are you installing any, like, lighting fixtures on the exterior of this addition?
Not on the exterior.
Okay.
All right, there's a floodlight for the outside for security, that's all that will remain.
That already exists, you're not adding anything.
You're not gonna have a light next to your sliding door?
Oh, there's one already there, and we'll just, that'll come, that'll come out with it.
That's gonna stay the way it is?
With the bump out, yes.
Right, okay, so there is gonna be a light next to the door?
Yes.
And it's, we normally mandate that they don't shine out, they shine down?
Down, correct.
You're okay with doing that, should you, you know, let's say you wanna change the lighting fixture midway through the game, you're okay with complying with, making sure it's downward or otherwise shielded? Okay.
Yeah, but that's to ensure that you're not shining on lights on other people's property.
Specifically the property who, the fence is already, already in their property?
There you go, yeah. If the fence was higher, you wouldn't have avoided it. Any other questions by board members?
One more really stupid question, Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry.
You see me for a question.
I know, I'm doing all the basic stuff that we do for additions, so, if you're doing, is the exterior of the addition, it's gonna match the, the rest of the house?
The siding wise, yes.
Yeah, it's good, okay, another condition that we would ask for.
Of course.
Very basic.
Yeah, it's not gonna be purple or?
Hot pink, no, no, no.
It's talking to me about a gingerbread.
So it's gonna blend in to your back house?
Okay, that, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, thank you for asking.
Thank you for that, by the way.
That is important, that was, you know, normally we'd ask that, but we, sometimes we assume things we shouldn't.
It's on their plans.
Yes.
It's not gonna match existing.
But.
So the variance is basically for lot coverage?
That's correct. Correct.
They're cleaning up the existing non-conforming.
All right. Do you know the size of the kitchen will be after it's built?
Total?
Because you have twenty by seven now.
Math in public, I love it.
So you're?
Thirty-five, I estimate thirty-five by sixteen.
Nice kitchen.
I'm sorry, again, math in public, I'd have to subtract the mudroom, which is about?
Yes, right.
So, yeah, it.
Wouldn't be a four thirty-five.
Correct, the whole.
So you're gonna take the twenty and take that out, and then the rest would be the mudroom?
Yes.
So it's like fifteen and twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gotcha, but they'll still be sixteen, all sixteen deep?
Yeah.
So twenty by sixteen, still a nice one.
Yeah, right. Any other questions?
Public?
What? Yes, I know, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Before we get to the public, I wanted to ask, you're, to your knowledge, this isn't inflicting any detriment onto the neighborhood that you can stress out?
I cannot, no.
And none of the neighbors have, to your knowledge, expressed any dislike with that, with your plan?
They have not, I'm friendly with all of them, they're all okay with it.
And they've all been notified?
The immediate neighbors, yes.
All, all the twenty feet neighbors that were notified have not, had come up with pitchforks and?
Not yet.
Okay. And, yeah, I don't, the, and the benefits obviously are that your kitchen is gonna be bigger, and it's gonna be more useful to your family, and it's going to cover land that's already impervious anyway.
Correct.
Any other things, okay? All right, I don't see any member of the public, except for the people sitting out there, and I assume you're the next application? Okay, so, seeing no members of the public other than the next application, and I don't assume you have anything to say about this one, right? Okay, closing to the public, very good, so, um, did you, Joe, did you wanna say anything about positives and negatives, just to?
No.
You wanna say?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
No, I did it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, is there anything else I missed?
No, you didn't miss anything, I mean, this is a very technical variance, because they're not making a situation worse, they're actually.
Improving.
They're not improving it, they're just not, they're not doing, you know, really.
They're improving the house.
They're improving the house, exactly, but they're not, in terms of the, the variance relief requested, they're not making anything worse. So it, it is sort of a technical nature by the fact that they bought a house that had an existing situation that somebody didn't get a variance for. So that essentially, they're, they're correcting what somebody else did wrong.
Right, and also making the house a little bit?
And making the house, enhancing the value of the house, yeah.
Great, terrific, okay, just wanna make sure, for legal reasons, we have to put all of them.
Of course.
Okay, so, would you like to start deliberations?
I don't think there's much to deliberate.
Well, you have to say something, so.
No, I appreciate you coming by, it's, definitely not gonna tell my wife about this project, because then I'll be the board member myself, keep this quiet, hopefully she's not watching, but, no, it seems like it makes a lot of sense, echo all the sentiments of our professionals, you know, you're not really changing anything, you're just righting, I guess, a wrong, if you wanna call it that, so, thanks for coming by, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jessica? So, I'm also for the application, I think you meet the C two criteria in terms of the, you know, existing non-conforming condition, in terms of the impervious coverage, there's no detriment to the community that I see, or, or, you know, anything that goes against our zoning laws, if anything, you'll be adding value to the home, and then that adds value to the neighborhood, and so I will approve the application.
Thank you.
Jerry?
I think it's a nice, simple plan to make your kitchen more enjoyable and be for it.
Thank you.
Jerry?
I don't really think I have anything of any value to add, it's pretty de minimis in its, in the application, you're increasing it by a small amount, it's not your offense, it's someone else's, so I think I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Tom?
I agree with everything my colleagues have said, the neighborhood's better, the house is better, and you're, you're correcting a non-conformity, so I'm on board.
Jonathan?
Yeah, there's nothing much more to add other than good luck, and.
Thanks.
I, I would be supportive of this.
Thank you.
I see some documents here dated from twenty twenty-three, that was so long ago, thank you for putting up with the process.
Okay.
And, and righting the wrong of the impervious coverage, thank you.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues, I, I think this is a benefit to the neighborhood, so I don't see any detriments, you're going over impervious coverage, you're actually getting, you're getting permission for something that was already there, that was impervious, you're not increasing it, you're not changing anything, you're not detrimenting the neighbors in any way, so I would be in favor of it.
Thanks.
So you wanna give us a little?
Quick summation, Mr. Chairman, absolutely, okay, applicant is here, there's just one applicant, but he's joined by, I'm assuming that's your wife?
Yes.
Hello, thanks for coming, she didn't testify, but she was sworn, okay, applicant here seeking one bulk variance, that's just for lot coverage, they're permitted twenty-five percent in this zone, which is the R four zone, they're proposing an existing condition, which is twenty-eight point three percent, as far as conditions go, the applicant has agreed to stipulating, has stipulated to comply with comments three point two, three point five, and four point one, and our board engineers memo dated September seventeenth, they've also agreed that, or stipulated that no exterior lighting fixtures installed in connection with this proposal would, or every, any exterior lighting fixtures installed in connection with this proposal would be directed downward or shielded, and additionally, the exterior of the addition is going to be, you know, aesthetically uniform with the balance of the existing dwelling, so, that's it, Mr. Chairman, one bear.
Do I have a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Roll call?
Yep, Vice Chairman Grosskoff?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Aronia?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Mr. Genakis?
Yes.
And Chairman Grett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You're done.
Great.
All that's left is to start the construction.
Start signing the checks.
Well, yeah, first you have to be started, first you have to get the plans.
Yes, that, those are in the works, too, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck, best of luck.
We'll be in touch.
Okay. Close to a record approval.
We're seeing where we're starting, we all grown up now.
Exactly, you can.
So easy.
Come on up, guys.
She have rejected.
It's a little, they're not too easy.
Excuse me?
It's up to the easy.
Yeah, come on up and sit down.
When I start, I'll do two years.
Sorry, for our plan of the board. Miss the garbage.
I know, I'm, I'm a by you all.
We could find another chair somewhere.
There's two.
There you go.
Sit down right there, young lady.
Hi, Jesse, how are you? It's not scary.
Just weird.
You're not scared?
You are on TV.
Don't talk to the girl there, Gary. Don't talk to the kids, Gary. Be be Gary.
Okay, now, the, the next application that we have is block one zero one zero one, lot six, zone R three, address is one thirty-one Rolling Hill Drive, application number two four dash one four Z, the applicant's name is Igor Sh, would you pronounce that?
Stivelman.
What?
Stivelman.
Stivelman, okay, good, that's just the way it's pronounced, that's the way it's spelled.
No, you do it.
Applicant proposes to construct a pool with patio area, and outdoor accessories in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling. Applicant is, is here, I see you sitting there, would you swear in everyone for this one?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, I'll just quickly point out, the notice was good on this one as well, the applicant timely served it and had the sufficient content to give the board jurisdiction to hear and decide the case, it was sent by certified mail, the owners of property within two hundred feet of the subject property on September sixth, and also published in the Daily Record on September sixth.
Good.
Okay, as fast as I can make it, okay.
Would you raise your right?
Anyone who's gonna be testifying, please raise your right hands, all right, thank you all, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, it's affirmative from everybody, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Great, terrific, and just to be fully disclosed, I live on Rolling Hill, I'm not within the two hundred feet, I'm off the road, so I have no interest in the, the immediate area, so I can, I can sit on this one. And I am familiar with the house, so, explain what you want done.
So we're trying to build that in-ground pool in the, in the backyard, which doesn't have anything currently.
You have a, above that pool currently, right?
Above, yeah.
Okay, and, and I saw your plans, what, what inspired to, what inspired you to build it as the plans indicated?
Just kind of, you spoke to a few pool people, they recommended that that's the best location, that's the one that's, has the least tree shading, you know, less stuff to clean up, less coverage.
Let, okay, I noticed there was a question in our, one of our plans, I think it was the planning, but, it was, it was a question about, that you indicate there's gonna be an outside kitchen, but you didn't specify where it's going to go, or maybe it wasn't, yeah, it was not labeled?
Yeah, we were still kind of trying to finalize. Yeah, we were still kind of trying to finalize because once we got the engineer to start doing the survey and the pre-planning, he came across that, you know, we're over on the variance. So we weren't exactly sure if we're going to do the kitchen or if we're going to do the fireplace. So we just kind of wanted to go in front of you guys, see what you say, and then take it further.
Well, whatever, whatever relief we give you today is what you're going to need or you're going to get. So if you want it, you got to ask for it now.
Got it.
Well, we, we were going to do it in, hey, the other point is we were going to do it in two phases. Meaning, uh, if we could start on the pool project, do that now and maybe do the kitchen next year.
Right, but you want the approval for it now.
Yeah, I get, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't, you have to come back all the way back to us again and get the approval.
Once you get approval, you have two years to begin.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just dropping in real quick. Ms., can I get your name and address for the record?
Katerina.
Katerina.
Katerina Stevenson, okay. Katerina.
Same address.
Okay, same address. Both, you both reside at one thirty-one Rolling Hill, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just a question about the, you know, phase two of the construction. Would it be contained within this area that would cause the twenty-eight percent? So it's not like you're going to come back and say, we need additional impervious coverage. So even though it's not on the plan, they're, they're accounting for the space.
It was just a matter of which corner is kind of going to go on the pavement.
For budget purposes, like splitting.
I get it.
Just, just, so just to be clear, if you're, if you're going to do the outdoor kitchen, everything you want to do, you only need twenty-eight point five percent lot coverage, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, you don't need any more than that for all this? Okay, just making sure we're getting the right thing captured here. Thank you.
Okay, so the lot coverage is going to be the same no matter either way, right?
Right.
Uh, with the kitchen.
Right.
And what would the kitchen consist of?
Barbecue grill, a refrigerator.
Uh, any, any running water?
No.
No water, just a refrigerator and a grill. Okay. You're not running a water line out there. Just a gas one?
Yeah.
Is it propane or natural gas?
We didn't even get that far, but I mean, natural gas would be easier, so you don't have to lug it. So hopefully that'll be the case, but...
Okay. Um... What kind of pool is it?
An A-frame eighteen by thirty-six.
Uh, cement liner?
Uh, I guess that they do metal. They drop like a metal thing.
Oh, so then it's a liner?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a frame with all?
Yeah, frame.
Okay. What, what is currently, uh, in that location? Just grass?
Just grass, huh? Well, the, the above ground, yeah. I mean, that's not a...
The above ground is not where this is going to be, right?
Uh, well, that's, yeah, it's going to go where that above ground is.
It, it is, okay.
Yeah, just sideways.
Just, okay, so the above ground...
Is it going to, yeah, it's going to go more to the right.
Yeah, right, more behind the house. Because your above ground is kind of to the side.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay. Okay, I see what you mean. So pools is going to be more behind the driveway than the house?
Yes. Yeah, it's going to kind of start from the driveway and kind of creep in to the side of the house, yeah.
Is there any reason why you didn't put it fully behind the house, or?
Uh, well, that side has the shade.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's where the shading is. I'd rather have it in the sun.
Well, so it was just the, the way nature...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, most trees, they don't have to take them down. It's nicer for those.
Yeah. Use the sun to heat the pool. Always a good idea.
The tree commissioner will be glad you're not cutting trees down.
Yes, right. Oh, it's always good, yes, not cut the trees down. Um, what necessitated the need for an in-ground pool to progress to what, the pool you have now?
Just like, uh, I'll take this one.
Yeah, go ahead.
My dream. Just a, just a lifelong dream. Wanted to, always wanted to have a pool. We moved here three years ago. It's our first home.
Oh.
And so here we are. For the kids, we have two kids.
The person who built that, he was a painter.
Yeah, his son and my son are in school together.
Oh, that's nice, yeah. When he built it, the taxes went up so high, then he couldn't afford to live anymore. That's what happens.
Darn bored, yeah.
Yeah, I know. No, yeah, I know. But, uh, so is there any questions from our engineer and planner?
Uh, so...
Yes, sir.
Turning to, in my letter, I did have some concern with the survey. Um, I noted that it's, it's called as a location and topographic survey rather than more traditionally a boundary survey. And then there are, in the notes and certifications, a bit of exclusions. So I, I, my first comment was asking the surveyor to provide some clarity in a letter that he is certifying the boundary. Um, there are iron pins at the front two corners of the property. So with confidence from those iron pins, the rest of the property can be accurately laid out. Um, so it shouldn't be much of, much of an issue for him to satisfy that with a quick letter. The second comment, uh, seeing the proximity of the sanitary and drainage easement on the side yard, particularly the, the physical location of the sanitary sewer main, essentially on the westerly edge interior to your property of that easement, and then the sanitary easement in the rear. Um, in three two, I asked that the surveyor stake out the limits of those easements for clear boundary for you before any construction happens so that the fence doesn't damage the pipe or that your proposed improvements don't go encroaching into exempt county park lands. And with that, three three, you know, just recommending the full, the pool fence on that side yard, that far side yard, the eastern side yard.
The pool fence, actually how he laid it out, they might have did it wrong. I was going to actually just square off the whole place.
The whole property?
Yeah, I think he kind of did like around the trees kind of go inside, which that wasn't what I told him to.
So you'll have, yeah, I see, I see what you mean. Um, you'll have, um, you'll have some room to change that final alignment when you obtain the construction permit for the fence, but I would like the fence to be five feet interior or from the center line of that, uh, sanitary pipe, just to ensure that the foundation...
Five feet in from?
Yeah, not, not from the edge of the easement, but like, I mean, you'll, they'll be able to tell the surveyor from where the, where the pipe is and where the edge of that easement is, to make sure there's enough room that it's not, the pipe isn't damaged by your fence. And then in the future, that they don't damage your fence if that sewer's being worked on by American Water.
Sure.
And that way, you know, you don't have to remove and replace at your cost that fence. For stormwater management, this is a minor development. There are some calculations on the plans that indicate that they will be satisfying four inches of runoff over the impervious area, which basically everything's collecting into French drains and draining to the recharger. There was a discrepancy in, on the plan and the call out, um, over the area. It says sixteen Coltech units. And in the calculation notes, it references twenty. And so, um, I just...
That needs to be reconciled?
Yeah, that needs to be reconciled. And that, that's essentially in, uh, my comment three six, just asking that your engineer take a second look at that and that I recommended he use Coltech's design calculator, which will actually give you a specific detail for what is going to be installed. And then along with that, three seven, there does need to be a soil log, ex, you know, test pit excavation in that area just to ensure that there, the seasonal high groundwater is deep enough that as they propose to install that, that that's the adequate location for it so that the, the stormwater management works. And then the last concern being four two. The, the survey shows a vertical datum based on Google Earth, scaled from Google Earth. Um, and the elevations they're referencing, I can't really cross-reference those two national vertical datums. Um, so there, I have some concern that the flood, flood hazard elevation from the Passaic River is somewhere on the tail end of your property. Um, and so if that's the case, then there, there may be either permit by rule or even general permits from DEP that you would need to construct in this area. They're, they're not hard to obtain because they're related to a residential improvement and the residential amenities.
So what would he have to do?
But so, so we're, what I'm recommending is an elevation certificate by your surveyor. That's kind of the, the cheapest first step where he can establish the vertical datum properly and tie that to, say, the first floor elevation of your home. And then from there, we can, he can translate the vertical datum he put on the contours so that what he calls two oh nine in the back of your property can be more accurately labeled as whatever elevation it is. And then that, that assessment can be determined. If that's the case, it's an outside agency approval.
So the better, the better the delineation of, of, uh, the grade of the height, it may be in his favor.
Yeah, I mean, essentially what, what we're looking for is these elevations to increase to something north of, uh, two fifteen, two eighteen in that area so that, um, the flood plain elevation under the new state rules that elevated by three feet would be just off your property. And then that way, you don't have to obtain any kind of permitting. And so it's just, um, an outside agency approval that, that may be required after further clarification.
You guys will comply with everything that's in, that Joe's gone through and everything in his memo, right?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, you do understand, anything our experts say that are conditioned will be put in a resolution. And your, whoever you have as an expert, whether it be your architect, your engineer, your, but your surveyor will know how to follow it.
Okay.
So that, that you just show it to them. Uh, this is not something you physically would have to do, except for the DEP. And you'd probably get your expert to do that too, you know, to contact.
Should be, if, if the elevations come out favorably, it could be, I mean, not, you know, not applicable. Or if it's slightly on the property, it may just simply require some, what do we call, permit by, by rule, which is essentially your engineer documenting on your plan that he's living within the rules of the flood hazard area for DEP. And then you don't even have to send anything to DEP. There's no cost to that.
These are all technicalities because of the river. Not that you probably even see the river from your house.
No.
I actually walked over.
You did?
Yeah.
How far is it?
Just under five hundred feet, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
So we're well, you know, we're outside the three hundred foot riparian. There's no other regulatory areas. It's just a concern if the potential of flood.
Which is, I don't think it's ever flooded that much, but who knows?
Right.
First time for everything.
Yeah, boy, unfortunately. Anything from the...
I'll tell your governor that.
Uh, no, the, the main question I had was really for Joe because the stormwater management system is something that I, I don't remember seeing before, uh, in this board, and so I didn't completely understand it, to be honest. Uh, you know, how, how it works and how it's installed and how it's maintained, and maybe Joe can provide.
So just quickly for everybody's benefit, right, these, this is, uh, Coltech's is, is the proprietor. Um, this, this chamber system, um, the details that are on the plans are standard specification details from, from the manufacturer. This is, uh, a design that's used in a lot of residential applications to keep a shallow system that then allows for infiltration, um, at, over a larger area. Think of it more traditionally as like you would see in a septic bed. You have a, a larger area, more shallow, that then can recharge in as opposed to vertically stacking in what would be like a, a concrete precast drywall. So those concrete systems, um, per each, each drywall have a fixed cost. And then you have the excavation cost and backfill around them. These systems, they're made, um, they're arched, plastic materials. Um, and so they can create them, extrude them for a cheaper price. And then you can have a, a, in a very cost-effective way of addressing stormwater infiltration for your mitigation at shallow depths. So this is something that over time we'll probably see more of these specked in town because there are areas of town where there's sensitivity to groundwater.
Right.
And so this, this type of design is more feasible in that location if they were to find, if they dig six or seven feet down and they're starting to hit groundwater. It, it would be viable to do this as opposed to a five-foot-deep precast drywall.
Yeah, interesting. Okay. So it's more suited for high water.
Yeah. You're leaving everything at a, you know, shallow depth. And we're talking about a patio area. And everything's going into a trench drain, staying at a low elevation when it gets off of your patio, and it gets underground, and then it stays at a low elevation as it goes into the recharge. As opposed to kind of dumping deep into a manhole, so to speak.
Interesting.
Is there a different expense for one versus the other?
Um, I, I think there's, they'll argue that there's certain efficiencies of scale on these systems because, you know, the, the plastic and the units themselves will cost less than per drywall concrete because you're essentially buying a precast manhole with holes in the side of it when you buy a drywall. These systems, it's really more a cost of excavating and then backfilling the stone than the pipes themselves.
And the labor.
It's labor. It's, yeah, it's labor more than the parts. So this, I mean...
With, with the drywall, you still have labor.
Not to, not to tell you to do it, but, you know, you, you can put these things together. You could kind of connect them all yourself. They're, they're simple enough to follow up. Yeah, you don't have to be me on the weekend warrior. You can be a true weekend warrior with these.
But is one, sorry, if, 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 um, the water level wasn't an issue, is one, uh, preferable to the other?
No, they're, they're equal products in, in terms of the mitigation they provide.
Okay.
They relate to like a leach field?
Yeah, similar. I mean, they really are more like a septic leach field.
Why except for...
That they're shallower, they're meant to be shallower.
Oh, that's... And, and was that something a new, is that a fairly new development, though?
These, uh, these have been around for probably close to twenty years. Ever since HDP pipe became...
It's surprising we haven't seen more of them.
Yeah. Um, you see them in, I mean, I've seen a fair number of them consistently over the last ten years, but I...
I'm surprised we haven't seen more.
We've probably only seen one or two in the last twenty applications in town. We also tend to get frequent flyers with our board, uh, and the professionals. So they have kind of tried and true details that they stick into those plans.
So they, they have their usual...
Yeah, you have your, yeah.
And can, so can you use the area on top of it?
Uh, yeah.
Rest, you can?
Yeah, you can. Certainly, like, you could use it as a lawn area to play on, things like that. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, and, and the manufacturer has certain specifications on these for if you were to, say, put them under the patio. Um, but you would not put these under a driveway. They're not H twenty loaded for...
Or, or a shed.
They would eventually crush.
Or shed on top of it.
Yeah, or, right, or a shed with, you know, um, a lot of equipment in it, things like that.
So you have to watch exactly what you put on top of it?
Yeah, but they're meant for open lawn areas, like, just really the kind of same restrictions you would put over a septic area.
Okay, all right.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
On this zoning table, the, you're looking at lot area thirty thousand, thirty-four, six sixty-nine, thirty-four, six sixty-nine proposed. Nothing changes. So when I see lot coverage to the bottom, twenty percent is what's allowed.
Yeah.
Existing's twenty-two point eight, going up to twenty-eight point five. There's no change. How does that number change?
There is a change. Only me, it's not changing.
You're saying covered lot area is the same? What, what's the variable that changes?
If you look in maybe versus support?
Yeah, they're, they're adding the patio area.
Yeah, they're adding the...
Yeah, plus the board.
Just want to make sure that...
Yeah, they're adding the...
Yeah.
The numbers are all right.
Yeah, they...
Makes sense.
You double-checked the numbers?
Yes, the last...
Yeah, I did. And it's in my report on page two, um, it, what they have existing. So what they're adding is the pool, uh, and the coping around the pool is adding another seven hundred and sixty square feet.
Oh, I see.
The patio is adding one thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet. And the equipment pad, I think for the pool, um, wa, is adding thirty-two square feet.
Oh, I see.
So it went, or it is proposed to go from an existing of seven thousand nine hundred six to nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three.
Okay. I see that.
Guess while, while we're on it, right, let me just clarify that for you too. So in the drainage calculation, there, there's the increase in nineteen seventy-seven square feet.
Right.
But that includes the significant area that is the pool and the coping, right? So seven hundred and sixty of that, nineteen seventy-seven. The stormwater system is designed as if the pool is patio and draining, right? The pool is going to evaporate. It's going to be replenished by the runoff.
Yeah.
In heavy rains, it's going to overflow, so we have that accommodation. But the system that's proposed is always, is proposed at storage greater than required minimum. But it's also creating a little bit of fact. Anytime we do a pool application, creates a little bit more factor of safety there to have more ability to recharge. Um, so essentially what you wind up with is our minimum requirement of four inches over the area could probably accommodate closer to a five inch storm because of that.
I, I have a pulling back out, I've never seen it overflow because of rain, never. I mean, it always seems to hold whatever rain falls.
I heard it only overflows when you do cannonballs into.
Yes. Talking about my weight, thank you.
Does the, does the current existing twenty-two point eight include whatever, um, coverage exists with the above ground pool, or how are we accounting for that?
That's not a permanent structure.
Yeah.
It doesn't.
I, I didn't count it because it's, it's temporary, it's not, yeah, I don't think it would, should be counted.
Yeah, no, that comes down, that can come down all right.
Right.
And they, and they do not have an existing, this is a pre-existing non-conformity, there is no, for the twenty-two point eight?
Yes. Yeah, you didn't add anything to the ground, no. That's, I think that when they, we did the house from the original ranch, this is what they came up with, twenty-two point eight. So I assume.
How long, how long ago was that?
Five, five.
About five.
Yeah, so I assume they got permission for the twenty-two point eight because they built the house that way.
Oh, so, so it's not a pre-existing non-conformity, it's actually conforming. Cause it's been, it's been, it's been granted.
Well, okay, yes, but it's exacerbating what the variance was granted.
I understand what's going on today, but I'm saying the twenty-two point eight was, we, we gave them a variance for that?
Lawfully, lawfully existing non-conformity.
Yeah, right, exactly.
What we.
Sort of. It's, it's a variant, yeah.
That's.
It's not pre-existing, it, meaning it wasn't before the zoning.
Yeah, if it was only five years ago, then it was within.
It wasn't before the zoning.
So it wasn't approved.
Right, so it wasn't lawful.
Okay.
Unless somehow it's passed the construction people.
Right.
Right, it's round two of the variance relief.
Yeah.
Right.
Seems like we have a lot of those.
Well, the rear pool and the deck might not have been.
No, 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 it's the house itself with the driveway and everything. The house was turned into a, from a one story house to a two story house and much bigger than the area, plus a larger driveway. So when they did that, they went to twenty-two point eight.
So it was probably the driveway that.
Yeah, most likely the driveway did it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's probably, it's probably the area of the driveway's rear of the home.
Yeah, I mean, it is a large driveway, but that's, yeah. And, and they did put their plans in, so somewhere on the plans it should have said that. Uh, do you have any, when? What is the method of accessing the pool from the house? Is there a current, is there going to be a walkway, is it just over grass, or what, what is there to access?
We were still, I guess, the far west side, you can come up and then go around. But we're thinking of doing a little walkway, I guess, from the left edge of the house to come up this way.
You mean to the right of the driveway to the left of the house?
Yeah, yeah.
Because you have a deck there, and then you have the paper patio.
Well, you go down the deck, right, where you have that main, if you're looking at the paper for the driveway, they have like, it's a big archway door. So that's, it's going to be to the right of that. We're going to put a fence, and that doorway is going to be in, locked out by the fence.
Okay, but is, I don't, on your plans, I don't see a walkway, it's not.
Yeah, it's not in there yet, because we're still kind of.
So it's going to have more coverage.
More coverage now, right, am I correct? It's going to be more coverage.
If it's a pave, yeah.
So for your sake, if that's what you want, you would have to clarify. If we give you the application permission tonight, then you would have to come back and clarify on your plans where you want that walkway, and your fence would have to be, and all those other conditions. And that would have to be looked at by our planner, our engineer, and the calculations of the overage would have to be, impervious coverage would have to be corrected.
You essentially have to come back to the board to get another variance.
I have a question. What constitutes as like an official walkway exactly?
Anything that's impervious.
Goes on the ground, like any?
If, if, if it's not grass, it's a walkway.
Okay.
So if you're putting slate, if you're putting brick, if you're putting cement, if you're putting stones, it's impervious. If you leave it grass, it's pervious. Some people don't care if they walk on grass between the grass and the pool. Uh, some people prefer a walkway. Anything that goes on that lawn that doesn't absorb water is coverage. I know it's not, it's, it's pretty close to the house, so it's not going to be, you know, from what I can see, i- i- it's only going to be a small little area, but it's still some coverage area, so. I mean, that, that gray area is all paper patio, right? So it would be from the left of that paper patio to, to the edge of where your, your decking's going to be, right?
You mean just, can I take a look, what you're looking at?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll have your plan for sure. Your hand, it's, it's that little, you have the pink house thing, you have the gray.
I don't think it's the same thing.
So it would be like, right over here.
Yeah, it is.
Small.
Right, so, so these are steps down, right?
No, these are steps up. These are steps down. This is the, no, there's no steps in, this is like in Zuma now.
Right, so the deck, the deck and the pa, and the papers, are they agreed to the lawn?
No, this is where the, and this is where the.
Says there's a wall.
This side, and then it would just go right in here.
Says block.
Show them on this one, Johnson, this is, this is the color.
This little paper patio looks like it has a wall around it.
Is that the?
Yeah, yeah.
You have the, this wall, block wall, is, is short. Right, so the top, the top of the walls has a patio and then the lawn is.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so these steps, so we were envisioning you'd, you'd be coming out here and then getting to that area.
Yeah, well, that, that's just all, this is one of the options, that's if we don't make entrance. This, we were thinking of doing that, but then also, this is the steps from the deck. So we wanted to come in right in here and put the fence, and do the fence.
Cause this is all open, yeah.
Right, that's sort of, here and the fence would come off the side of the building to the rear straight.
Yeah.
And then cut along the parking lot and the driveway.
So if they do it in a short area with the steps there, what, what would be the coverage, if any?
It would be like a four by four area type of.
Well, that's what I know.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty.
Find the scale. He's about to scale it from just his mind. From his pen cap.
Pen cap. Well, he's an expert.
An expert. I'm allowed to do it this way. Do you not know that the end of the big bed, that little bed, that's, that's a one inch equals twenty square?
Is it really?
Yeah.
Yellow on the inside.
I'm impressed.
Right? Uh, I mean, we're talking about probably
Five.
Ten by, ten by fifteen is conservative.
Ten, ten feet by fifteen.
Yeah, like, because of an area that we're infilling between.
That seems, that seems.
Doesn't even have to be heavy block.
No, I was going to say, it's less than that.
No, I mean, it really only have to be about.
Four feet wide, actually.
Four, yeah, four to six by twelve.
We, we discussed doing like just a few pavers, just for the aesthetics of it, not for.
I understand, but let me put it this way, it's better we give you.
Yeah, a hundred percent, we're not doing anything like.
Extra coverage than for you to now be non-conforming. Yeah, and have to come back.
Yeah.
So this way you have the choice.
When your contractor's there, you may just say, you know what, can you just do this area, they just.
You have the budget, problems.
Do it, right, and it's small, and it's, it's convenient, and it gets the job done that you want, you actually want that.
I heard, I heard.
Don't want grassy feet walking in and out of here.
Yeah, don't, don't try to chance on the variance because then you're going to wind up coming back before as I said, oh, we need another ten feet, ten square feet. It's not worth it. Um, what would be the added coverage?
Conservatively fifty square feet.
I would go to a hundred.
Just give them a hundred.
A hundred, another hundred.
So what would that change on the, on the numbers then?
Okay, so it would go to nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three, which divided by thirty-four, sixty-nine.
Thirty-four, six, nine, nine. You said ninety-nine eighty-three, we're looking at twenty-eight point, well, point two eight seven seven. So that's what, twenty-eight point eight, you want to call it that?
Twenty-eight point eight, or you want to go twenty-nine, just to make sure?
Well, twenty-eight point seven seven, if we want to be really precise with it. That's, I'm sorry, Mr. Check.
I, I mean, that's, yeah, why don't you do twenty-eight point eight?
Twenty-eight point eight.
Fair enough.
So we're going to go, and we're going to give you a variance, if we do give it to you, it's twenty-eight point eight. So that way you have that option of making it solid from that point to the, to the deck.
Right, thank you.
You know, no one says you have to use it, but if you don't have it and you use it, that's a problem.
Yeah.
So, you know, as we told the last applicant, we always want to make sure what we give you is what you're going to need and use.
If you don't, if you don't use it, you get a hundred square foot shed for free later.
There you go.
One day you're going to need a, you're going to need a shed for the, you're going to need a shed for those pool noodles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Talk to me about sheds tonight, stop.
You don't like sheds, I know. You want sheds.
We're working with the planning board on sheds, so.
Oh, you have no idea.
I know that.
Yeah.
Can we shed some light on that?
Please.
I, I'm so bad.
Boom, boom.
Yeah, um.
You're all night, folks.
Let's hope not. Okay, is there any other information you want to give us about the project? Have we touched upon everything that you?
So, yeah.
Well, as far as the kitchen area, that's included in the coverage, right?
Yeah, it was just a matter of like going to which corner.
I understand, I just want to make sure that if, if, if it isn't installed, we're covering that, okay? So it may not be done immediately, but at some point you're putting that little kitchen, outdoor kitchen area. Which is going to be a grill in the back and a, and a little refrigerator.
Do they need a variance for that if it's going to be on top of what's already impervious coverage?
Is it on top of what's?
If, if they put it on top of their patio, which I see in one of.
You need a double impervious coverage variance.
Yeah, well.
Double secret.
Double your fun, no. If it's on top of something, probably not, because it's already covered.
And depth, a, a question down.
Yeah, no, I just want, but it doesn't.
Good question.
It doesn't look like it is, because the patio's over here and this over here. Oh, it's on top of this?
On top of that patio.
Okay, that's true, it's on top of the decking, it's going to be, it's not going to be outside the deck, it's going to be on the deck.
Okay, so you don't need extra for that?
No, but I mean, it's just that we, in our approval, which I assume will come, is that we are recognizing that you're going to do that at some point, okay? Do you understand the conditions as we've been talking about them, especially in our reports? And as I said, most of your arrangements will be.
The engineer should know exactly what is required.
The builder will know, will contact. Any comments by our experts as far as?
I have one more question, Mr. Check, I'm sorry. Are you guys installing any lights, like, like?
Yeah.
Ground lighting or anything with, around the pool? Is that the plan?
In the pool, I think, they, like, the setup comes ready with the, there might be lights inside.
What about like walkway lighting, anything like that?
I don't think we got that far.
Okay, in the event that you decided to install some walkway lights, would you stipulate that any lighting would be, you know, directed downward or shielded?
Yes.
As we mentioned to the other guy.
Right.
So if you have, if you want to put some guiding lights along the edge, it would be, they would be directed downward, not outward. Although you, you don't have any neighbors behind you, so it's all the woods.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
It's been nice how, you know, we've been able to kind of help you currently, it's not a solid plan yet. But how does that happen when, you know, the contractor finally gets on site and he says, hey, why did we do this? Why did we do that? Is he somehow obligated to watch this video and follow the plan?
No, 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 what we're going to do is, they're going to finalize their plans in accordance with what we just told them. As far as, go ahead.
What we do, once the construction's all said and done, the applicant provides the construction department with an as-built survey. That as-built survey, if they're over what they're allowed, then they're back to the board.
Or they have to remove something.
Or they have to remove something, right.
So traditionally.
There's also a, a resolution that we pass that gives guidance to whomever's concerned, the builder, the contractor, the homeowner.
It's, it's normally followed, yeah.
What they have to do, including the inspectors. So when the inspectors go out, they take the resolution and they say.
The inspectors don't.
This is, well, they should, this is what's approved.
No, the inspectors, it's not, the inspectors don't get involved with the resolutions, that's not their jurisdiction.
Okay, well, everybody else involved should.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, Gary, what we'll do before they even approve the build it, they will have to go back and modify these plans so that they conform with our, with our conditions and what we just explained and different, and then once they do that, it's reviewed by our experts to make sure they complied with what we said. And then we sign off on them, and then they build it according to it.
So you think that's all, is that why the house was built?
I have no idea, that's a good question. But I think that, you know, the, the problem I think there was, I think we all think it was probably the, something to do with the driveway, who knows? But, you know, that, that, you know, let's hope that that doesn't happen because, you know, we saw that little creep here, that little twenty-two point.
Think so.
You know, that, but.
Touch on what your concerns about, right?
Back to the application, the matter at hand. Um, Liz brought this up, and I was thinking the same way, with, with the stormwater management. And our engineer did a great job, I think, of explaining the concepts of this system that I really haven't seen before, but I've seen it in other applications such as French drains for basement drainage or, or other areas like that, you're just channeling water away. One of the things that, Joe, you talked about in your report was that the, that the homeowner is going to be responsible for what you said, of effective management and maintain, maintenance with, with going forward. So it's a simple, looks like a very simple type of collection system. What can go wrong with it? I mean, is it like going to be clogged with silt in a year, two years, like leaves? It's, it's basically, you know, the swell collects, it looks like the swell collects the water.
So typically.
The leaves and mulch and everything else.
Yeah, you're looking to protect the infiltration system, right, the, so the arches, the plastic arches, that's where the, the mass of water sits, and then the rest of it is in the stone, in that backfilled area. You're, you're looking to protect that by having conveyance to it. So if we were doing this off of a roof area, our code requires gutter guards, things of that nature, to make sure that leaves and other material doesn't get into that system and clog it. In, in a patio area, that, that trench drain is the protection. So the detail of the, the French drain, we're talking about a, a very traditional French drain, right, of, of a stone backfilled area with perforated pipe underneath, and then there's a river rock stone at the top. So that stone, essentially landscape perimeter of stone around your patio will naturally filter out the sediments, the leaves, and they can be blown away. And the water can infiltrate below into the washed stone and then get into the system without carrying with it a lot of sediment or other things that could clog the system.
So that's the regular maintenance.
So that, well, that's, that's the, that's the design.
Yep, okay.
You know, the design protecting it, and then from there, there's clean out points on, on the system. So you'll see these couple of inspection ports.
It did say optional, though. Can we make that mandatory, and would you do that? Is that something that should be done?
Um, based on, you can go by manufacturer specifications on certain size, number of chambers cross-connected together, they'll have.
Okay.
They'll, the option, the option is really the option on every chamber. And then when you have certain amounts of chambers connected together, they're going to want, yeah, inspection ports per manufacturer detail.
So it's not optional, you don't feel like doing it, you don't feel like cleaning out the system, it's optional when it's, certain numbers stacked together.
If they were not to maintain the system and it was to fail, then, you know, um, we would see that through essentially code violation with a concern of water ponding in an area. You'd probably notice it yourself first because it's next to your pool and your amenity that you're out there using and enjoying. And you can't use the lawn next to it because it's wet and saturated. Um, or your adjacent neighbor may notice that that wet area is encroaching into their property and then raise concerns with code enforcement. So one of those two ways, it's, it's going to get addressed. Usually it's going to be addressed because you don't want muddy feet before you go back in your pool.
Thank you. And then last question on that is, we added a little bit of coverage. Is that an opportunity to, you know, continue the, the swell towards that area? Is that even worth it? Do we need to do that, or is there an opportunity to pick up anything from the driveway while we're there? Is that low cost?
So.
Low hassle kind of stuff while we're already there, to just grab a little more water?
It's relative, the hundred square feet is relatively de minimis in that, in that concern. Uh, but the, the, the property does generally grade to the rear. The driveway, the, the patio, the existing patio, pretty directly straight back to the rear, so anything.
Get that anyway?
Yeah, anything that we're going to propose in that area to, to connect, create connectivity is essentially going to drain right towards that, that French drain.
It's all going to slowly go back in.
And that'll have. Yeah, and that, and that drain will have the ability to take some of, you know, the driveway runoff that might run into the, the yard.
Perfect.
Can go into there. And then anything else is going to go into exempt conserve lands behind the property.
And that drainage system will have the excess capacity to take some extra water from the driveway and wherever else.
Yeah, some, it's not going to be able to. Yeah, some. It's not gonna be able to take all the driveway.
Yeah, but some, some, some will get absorbed there. Okay, good.
I noticed we gained a member of the public. Do you have any, member of the public, do you have any comments on this? Okay.
What about questions?
Questions, comments on this application? Do you? All right, I close it to the public.
Can I just, just add one thing, is that Section one twenty-four point five on swimming pools has some regulations about lights. So in the, in the resi, whatever resolution, just.
What are those?
Well, it's Section H, subsection H. Lights, if any, shall be restricted to such lights as shall not be a nuisance to adjoining property owners and shall not remain lighted after ten o'clock P M.
So that's an interior pool light?
No, that's, that's exterior.
So that's not the pool light that would be in the pool?
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, so just, I think.
So like, pool lights around the pool or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Festoon, festoon lighting, you might hang up on holes that might be a couple of feet over, right?
Oh, I understand.
Liz, what's the citation on that ordinance section?
Okay, so it's one twenty-four point five, subsection H.
H, okay. Thank you.
That's all gonna be put in the resolution. It'll be interesting reading. So, any more questions by the board members?
Do you want me to summarize, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, all right. Before you guys deliver it, I'll just point out quickly. Applicant here seeking a lot coverage ratio variance. They're permitted twenty percent in the zone, which is the R three residence zone. Existing lot coverage on this property is twenty-two point eight percent. They're proposing twenty-eight point eight percent. You'll note that we revised it up from twenty-eight point five. As far as stipulations slash conditions go, the applicant's agreed to comply with everything in our board engineering, board engineers memo dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And that's particularly comments three point one, three point two, three point three, three point six, three point seven, three point eight, three point nine. For, and comments four point one to four point two. As far as additional conditions go, the only one I captured would be that any exterior lighting, walkway lighting would comply with Section one twenty-four point five each of the ordinance, and that's our provisions governing pool lighting. I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jerry, would you like to start the deliberation?
Sure. I think that the applicant, the applicant did a nice job of presenting their needs for a variance here. I think what they're doing is going to increase the value of their home and be a benefit to the neighborhood. I think there's a way we can do this without having it impact our, our zoning ordinance, or I don't think it's going to do anything to impact your neighbors. I think there's a lot of open space behind you, water flows that way anyway, it's the river, I mean, water goes down there. But you've made good efforts, your engineers made good efforts to capture the amount of water required by regulations to build such a type, type of a development. Plus, our engineer stated that it might actually, you know, improve the situation now by capturing some of the water from your driveway. I think overall it's pretty good, and I'm in favor of it. Tom?
I just, I just think that given with the location, right next to the open space, there's certainly no objections from any of the neighbors. I think the conditions that are imposed upon the applicant are complete, the ideas that, especially the items that the R engineer mentioned. So with all those conditions and requirements, I think it's a, it's a good project.
Okay, Jonathan?
Yeah, I would agree. I think that the applicant has met the requirements for a C bulk variance. I think that they've shown that the benefits of this will outweigh any of the detriments, and it doesn't appear that it would cause any substantial detriment to the public good. There's really no public here who would even testify to that. And so therefore I would be in, I'd be in support of this and enjoy your pool.
Tom?
I also am in favor for the reasons stated previously by my colleagues. Unfortunately, you have a neighbor that's a real pain in the butt, but, you know. Did you see that? Did you have it on camera? No, anyway, all seriousness aside, you know, this is, this is a great application. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you. Gary?
I think you guys are gonna have a great time in your pool. You're looking forward to that? Your dream is coming true and.
Jessica?
Yeah, for all of the reasons stated, I, I think that you've met the requirements of, to obtain the C variance under the second subsection of, of the code there, and I'm for the application.
Randall?
Benefit of going last, you don't have much to add, and he has brilliant comments ahead of me. The stipulations seem pretty reasonable, and it seems a great thing, so best of luck.
Thank you. I concur. I think that'll be a good addition. We always need another pool in the neighborhood.
Everyone's.
It'll, it'll, you know, add to your enjoyment of the house, and I'm sure you'll like it. So I would be in favor of it. You already summed up.
Yes, sir.
We'll call.
Motion?
Motion, I'm sorry. Motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Okay, Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yep.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Enjoy it.
And like I said, you'll have the resolution, that'll outline everything. Do your plans accordingly, you can sign and then you can begin. If not this year, early, early next year. Yeah, well, it's amicable. So I'll email everything.
Yes, we'll be in touch.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right, we have the board discussion of bylaws. You guys want to take a five-minute break and?
No.
Let's, let's take a little five-minute break.
Sure.
Real quick, go to the bathroom, you know, and then sit down and we'll look at the bylaws. All right? All right, we have a version of the bylaws, which we've gone over based on our comments last time.
Yep.
And you added attire.
I did.
You took out experts, professionals.
Yeah. I'll just point out, Mr. Chairman, just looking, you're all looking at the table of contents. Just a couple of global changes. I changed, we eliminated the term board staff or experts, we just left it at professionals, 'cause I think that makes the most sense, makes it very consistent throughout the entire document. You're correct, we added Section one colon one dash twelve attire. And I'll just point out, Vice Chairman Grosskopf and I sat down and went through this entire thing, so, you know, he's, I believe he's pretty comfortable with how things ended up, so. Wanted to defer to him on this matter. Okay, so we got attire. Also, I added a section two colon four dash nine, that's regarding site visits and personal knowledge, when board members have personal knowledge of a situation. There's case law that suggests that you need to put it on the record, like if you're, you know, judging an application based on your own personal observations, at least if that's been part of your calculus, you need to point that out so the applicant or the objector would have opportunity to respond to that, you know, that just makes sense.
We normally encourage people to go over the.
Right, right, exactly, right. It's just, you know, a matter of it being.
Saying, I looked at the property and this is what I saw.
Exactly, exactly. And that's really it as far as global changes go. If you want, I could go point by point through the document, but I will just quickly hit attire. It was one twelve. I pulled, actually, this language came from the University of Michigan. Yeah, it was University of Michigan, their, their dress code policy. It seemed to make, you know, it seemed like very boilerplate stuff. You know, you're expected to be, wear, you know, professional, be of professional appearance, that means you have clean, neat clothes, no holes or wrinkles. Your clothes aren't faded or worn out. Yeah. You gotta get that iron going before you come over here, guys.
Why not Michigan State's dress code?
You know what's funny, Andy? I almost brought Michigan State in there, and I was, wait a second, I know there's like a whole issue with the two of these being named different.
How many people here are violating the wrinkle policy?
Not currently.
Hey, you look clean, you're good.
We come from work all day, seriously.
Who enforces the wrinkle?
I have to allow extra time to go home and press my shirt.
If you want me to pull out wrinkles, I can do that.
Well, how about if you, what about tucking your shirt in? I mean, what about that?
That's a whole nother step.
I don't know.
Okay, so we're gonna pull out wrinkles, just, you know, this, again, this is borrowed from their website, I didn't think it would get too much of it. Appropriately fitting, no visible undergarments, obviously you don't want people with, you know, you know what's poking out. Free from offensive images, words or logos, again, makes sense, you don't need anybody.
How about thongs? Can you wear thongs?
Well, that is undergarment, as long as it's not visible.
Cover it up, we're good.
Yeah, as long as it's not visible.
Nobody wants to know what you're wearing.
I know, I mean like flip flops.
Oh.
What did you think?
Yeah, Jerry, come on.
Uh huh, you're right.
Cover it up real good.
And then it, it goes on, just says you're expected to dress in business casual attire, I think that's what everybody wears anyway. You know, it's nothing, again, it's very straightforward.
I like it, it's good.
You know, no, no jeans, gym sneakers, gym shorts.
Right.
Also carve out for religious attire, you know, if somebody wants to wear something like that.
Sure, well, you know, headwear and things like that.
Right, right. Reasonable, though, of course.
Those two colors.
Right.
Gang color.
No, gang color.
Gang color to team color.
Yeah.
This is like devolving.
All right, no, no, we're good, we're good. All right, is there any other comments on any other sections that we currently, like you have site visits?
Yeah, that, that's another thing I just wanted to hit on real quick, Mr. Chairman. So if you guys go down to two colon four dash nine, that's site visits by and personal knowledge of board members. This was lifted from another one of our boards, the Bernard's Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. They have, this was part of their bylaws. As I was kind of explaining before, if you, a board member makes a visit to a property, you need to kind of, you need to put it on the record, yeah, exactly, to give everybody an opportunity to respond to it. This is more so of, you know, kind of leapfrogging off of this, more of a question for Deb, I suppose. What, I don't know if we wanted to include it in the bylaws, but what is like the typical process if a board member wants to go to a, go visit a site? Do they go through you? Is it?
No, no, no.
Do we have a process?
The applicant signs a waiver allowing us to do it.
Okay.
So we, we just go on our own.
Okay, so there's no like ID badges or anything handed out, or?
No, we've talked about it over the years.
Yeah.
We can do ID badges in the new year, that's.
Okay. Well, we could always revisit the bylaws and, and quarterly, I just, yeah, I thought it might, if there was.
We have to land on our forehead with magic, Mark.
Right.
I always tell the applicants too, I say, you know, just don't, don't be alarmed if you see a car parked outside. Like, I think it's a given that nobody really goes on somebody's property.
Right.
It's more of a, just a look around. I mean, unless the homeowner's home and you introduced yourself.
Well, you could walk up to the door and ring the doorbell.
Sure you could. I, I think that some, some are less brave to do that.
I've never done that. I've never seen the need to do that, but, you know, okay.
I think most just park on the street and just kinda take a look, you know.
But I mean, if it's a backyard and you can't see it from the street, sometimes it's good, you just knock on the door. If you're home, you say, excuse me, I'm with the board, I'd like to look at your backyard. They say fine, at least they know you're there, and you're walking in the backyard.
I'm here, that's a practical matter, it makes sense to go announce yourself before you get blasted with a shot.
Yeah, we don't, we do not recommend trespassing without the knowledge of it.
Right.
Definitely don't do that. I don't think you need the bylaws to know that, but nevertheless. So that was one point I just wanted to bring up. Cleaned up continuances. There was one other section when it comes to board, towards the end, part three in particular, two points. Going out of order, I'll start with three, three, that's the professional performance evaluations. I, I know you guys are maybe considering doing something with that this year, so these might have to get amended next year, depending on how that process plays out. But all this language was originally borrowed from the former set of bylaws that this board had. And it referenced, you know, for example, the Board of Adjustment Performance Criteria. I couldn't find any document like that, so that I changed.
Probably didn't have it.
Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, the bylaws have, you know, just kind of been changed here to, you know, say that that's gonna be produced by the evaluation committee. You know, again, you guys can amend these bylaws at any point in time, so this is, yeah. Just pointing this out in case, you know, you wanna change it later on. And then if I could go back a little bit, three colon one dash one, that's removal of board members. And with this, we're talking purely about removing from the board, we're not talking about if a board member's conflicted and he can't sit on an application. If you guys recall, there was that memorandum that I sent out in August regarding removal of board members, vacations, forfeitures of office. So I, Tom and I were talking about it, and we, we thought it might be a good idea to, and this is more of a discussion for the entire board. Bring up, you know, as a, for the board to decide here, what types of behaviors do you think would warrant removal from the board? So the standard that the case law gives us is that you have to be engaged in an activity of misfeasance or nonfeasance, which, this is quoting the statute directly, or not the statute, the case law, says, again, misfeasance or nonfeasance, which, quote, "in view of the duties and obligations of the office as a board member, substantially disadvantages the public." So. So, for example, you know, I put number one, flag, or frequent, non-consecutive, unexcused or inexcusable absences. You know, you miss seventy percent of the meetings, but they're not consecutive. Flagrant violations of these rules. What that could be is kind of up to interpretation. Three, disrupting.
Is this all case law, based on the case law, or is that you?
The additionally paragraph is. The rest of it is no, because this is a very unexplored area of the law, surprisingly. The only case on this subject, surprisingly enough, comes from the seventies. It involved a board member who was an engineer in his professional career. He told the board and the township that he was going to be away for eight months, couldn't, you know, attend any meetings. He was a planning board member, if I remember correctly. And came back and then he missed another three meetings for a work obligation, but he didn't get those last three meetings cleared by anybody. He wasn't permitted. He ends up getting kicked off the board, sues the town out of his own pocket, and he gets reinstated because the court found that the absences were excusable, meaning that, well, he didn't get express permission. He had good reason to, exactly. But that's where they come up with this entire idea of when you can get canned.
So, this is supposed to be able to codify what a good reason is.
Right, right. I would, in my legal opinion, because I'm a very conservative legal mind, I would say try to keep it as
Simple.
as simple and as tight to, you know, it being something that really disadvantages an applicant or the public in general. Like, again, frequent, non-consecutive absences, for example. That's, that's an easy one.
Sure, yeah, because you can't run a board with less members.
Right, exactly. That's, that's a great, you know, going beyond that, you know, disruptive in meetings. What does that, what does that cost?
Wearing a thong.
Flagrant violations of these rules. There you go.
No, I, I understand. I mean, I, I.
And I just point out really quickly, Mr. Chairman, if the board isn't under no obligation to adopt any of those right now, or, you know, we could adopt the bylaws as is, remove that little paragraph that I added and just keep it at the base, which is just MOL.
I like the paragraph because it's based on case law.
Yeah.
The flagrant violations of these rules, I'm a little, a little conflicted about because.
As am I, to be quite frank.
The reason I say that is because it sounds like, how many times do you have to violate the rules? Which rules?
Right.
Does, do, you know, some rules are more important than others, so that has me bothered a little bit.
Yeah, that was more of a suggestive.
It isn't as definable.
Right, exactly.
It isn't as quantifiable. It isn't as, as solid as I'd like. It's, it's too wishy-washy.
Is there anything to be learned from Sparta ready mix?
I'm sorry.
Is there anything to be learned from the Sparta ready mix case regarding, like, so with the Sparta ready mix diamond chip, the, essentially, the entirety of, the entirety of the board was then forcibly recused from the application and a whole new board was created.
Well, that's actually a funny.
Because of their participa, yeah, because of their participation in public social media. That was, just, just simply in their participation to read it and be a part of a group that happened. The group was against it, but they were not providing their opinion. But just something related to social media and a current, more current standard, that, that might be something that could be narrowly banded and pointed in there.
That is a good thing to bring up, Joe. That, I think that deals more so with, with conflicts on an individual application supposed to remove from the board. But it's definitely something.
That's conflicts on an individual.
Yeah, but, but that, that practice of.
Speaking out publicly.
Speaking out publicly and involving yourself in public interest that would inherently.
Or even in favor of.
Yeah, or create some presence of bias.
Yeah.
In any, in any application to come in forward.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, you can't go out there and.
How do our bylaws protect us of that?
What do you, what do you protect them?
That's what you're suggesting, putting something in our.
Well, just, just if it was worth a conversation for five minutes, or if there's.
All right, what about?
We do have stuff about non-public, you know, talking publicly about the cases. That's in there.
If you look at one colon one dash ten and one colon one dash eleven, that's ethical responsibilities and disqualification. Yeah. That doesn't really, to Joe's credit, the, the Sparta case that he's referring to is relatively recent, so this, I did not, I wasn't really considering that when I, when I was putting these together, but that might be something worth adding. I mean, the basic rules are outlined here, right? You know, you can't discuss the matter of a case outside of a hearing if you're, you know, within two hundred feet. If you're in, you know, one colon one dash eleven, you know, when you're on property within two hundred feet, you gotta refuse yourself if, you know, you have some kind of professional association with the applicant, familial association, personal or pecuniary involvement that might be reasonably expected to impair the board member's objectivity or independence of judgment. I think that kind of covers.
That covers that topic and I think it's just an example to point out to the board of somewhere where it's relatively innocent to participate in a Facebook group so that you can read the comments, but by participating, you're acknowledging that group's belief.
That's a general.
Yeah, and so you're in some way in their camp just by participating in what is a private group.
What if the person disagreed on the Facebook?
But by, by, well, so, so that case, that, the issue in that case was that by, by entering into a private group, so by asking to be allowed in and then the administrator of that group allowing them in, they were acknowledging themselves essentially on that side of the fence with or without any comments they posted.
Right.
And then even if you post the comments, you're talking about, yeah, negative or even positive. You're talking outside of the.
Outside the board.
Right, exactly.
And so it's essentially covered by that section in those governing rules already. It's just worth kind of giving the example tonight so that you guys can understand how social media plays a role.
But I think it would be worth actually including social media.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Put in social media, yeah. Participation in social media, which in, in any way discusses the application.
Do we want to reference that case name too, consistent with the holdings of, or is it not that, is it not specific enough?
Well, yeah, you'll, you decide if you want to do that.
It hasn't been full appeal, through full appeals yet, but.
Okay, but I mean, just to let everybody know on the board, if we happen to have an application before us that happens to be controversial in some manner or form and public is against it or for it, just caution, don't talk to people outside the board. Don't make, don't express your personal dislike or like for the, the project that is coming before us because that could be taken as a bias for or against.
It should be on any application, not just whether it's controversial or not.
No, I'm just saying, no, what I'm saying is usually the ones that controversial, you have, you have more of an opportunity to do that.
Understood.
The ones that aren't, don't normally bring that up, but.
After it's approved or disapproved, that's okay?
I wouldn't even do it then. Let me put it this way.
Yeah, if it's appealed.
If it's appealed, you got a problem. So, these applications that come before us, the normal ones, like the two we had tonight, there was no public, it wasn't controversial, but you have a development that's controversial, or you have something else that's controversial. Even after it's approved or disapproved and you go out there and start talking about it, that will affect an appeal. You know, now you have expressed, you know, you're now giving the public or that person ammunition to say, "Oh, you see, he didn't like that," or "He liked that application. He had some bias toward it."
But after the appeal process, it's okay. For example, if I go to Taco Bell and eat, it's okay.
Yes, that's not, see, that, that's, that's totally.
Are they open yet? No comment. No comment.
There's no purple. They took your.
No comment.
You know you're gonna eat there. Come on.
But, you know, no.
Probably, they open, I'm going there.
I've never been to Burger King.
Let me, let me put it this way. We got ShopRite before. Everybody shops at ShopRite, so we can't, you couldn't find a person in this town.
You're for it, and you shop there.
Right, but that's, doesn't mean we're for what they're trying to do. That just means we.
They're trying to get milk, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? You know, it's, nobody can, can fault you for, for using, utilizing a public entity that holds itself out to the public, like a store, but you, you don't want to say, "Oh, I love ShopRite. I have, you know, I, I think they're the best thing in the world." You, you want to avoid that over exuberance about it.
What if you're just reiterating what you said in deliberation? So, like, we deliberated tonight.
Oh, that's different.
If you just repeat that, that shouldn't be a problem.
No, no, that's different because.
I would, I would advise against doing, talking about it in any way, shape or form.
I think all you have to do is look at one colon one dash ten C, and that forecloses everything that you're talking about right now.
Right.
And to the extent that you wanted to follow Liz's recommendation and add a social media aspect to that, that's probably the correct place to put it.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, no, you know, it's just better not to talk about these things.
Yeah.
I mean, ten years later, I don't care, but, you know, don't do it immediately following anything that we chose.
Like, the only thing I would say is like.
It only speaks to current or pending.
Well, if it's up on appeal.
But if it's not on appeal yet, we don't know they're going to do it.
Right.
Yeah, but.
You can't be asking us to be quiet.
You have to say to yourself, "Why do I need to do this?" Like, who benefits from this?
It's called common sense.
Right, and, and your neighbor, your friend, your, your friend, your objector will just, they'll understand if you say, "As a board member, it's really, I'm really not supposed to comment on this."
Right, if somebody approaches you and say, "Why did you give those people a variance? Because they're disturbing whatever." Just say, "We heard the facts, the board deliberated, and that was the," and that's it. You know, very, you know.
People don't press after that. They just let things go.
You know, "I can't speak about it beyond that," you know, beyond what the board decision was. That's all. I mean, your personal opinion should be kept out of it at that time because it's not a good thing.
Yeah, I guess it's one thing to say, "Oh, we, you know, as a factual matter, we heard the application yesterday," like last night.
Tell them to go to the tape.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Go to the interview, play.
Chris, can I just ask you one question? I've seen this discussed at whatever forums, like the Somerset County thing about, you know, obviously with the internet, it's different nowadays where people, you might, when you're looking at an application and be like, "Oh, let me look it up on Zillow." Or, "Let me look it up on Google Earth," or whatever.
That's a good ques, I think I know where you're going with this, but go on.
Well, no, I guess the question is to what extent can, does a board member have to disclose how, what they found that might be like, be persuading them? And.
Yeah, I think that ties, that ties into that section.
I mean, I think a good example of that is tonight. If you look at the aerials of the property, you wouldn't have seen the pool, right, in the backyard, the existing temporary structure, but in their application photos, you may. Or if there's an absence of them, right, if there was an absence of those photos in the application, and you were to drive, you were to drive past the site and you saw it, you know, it's, it, it, it's a good question to ask so that there's disclosure. I noticed that there was, right, there was a temporary above-ground pool. You discuss how long it's been there, how long the activity's been in that part of your yard, since that's where you're proposing your permanent structure, right? It's worth, instead of sitting silent in overall, it's worth utilizing those things as a point of discussion to increase the benefit of, of the testimony on it.
Right, exactly.
Right, yeah, typically, yeah, typically it'll come out in the questioning, but to Liz's point, you're, you're actual, you're right. If, if you guys, you know, let's say you pull up Google Earth before you come to the meeting and you, you're looking at it, and that's, you know, informing how you're going to decide the application.
Will give you a port of information that no one else has.
Right, you, you, yeah, exactly. You need to bring it up. You gotta give the applicant a chance to respond, because what if you see something, it's not actually there, and then you're like, "Well, they got that stupid thing in the backyard, so I'm not voting for this."
Or, or, yeah, Google Earth could be wrong, or it could then change.
It's outdated sometimes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, or if you were to reference that.
To accommodate that.
What, the bylaw? The bylaw is nothing that needs to be changed. That's what I added with that, section two.
Okay, so we're, so we don't need to change anything to?
No.
No, I think we're just saying, like, when you're, when you're participating in the public hearing, you know, if you were to go on Google Earth and use the slide bar to look at aerials from nineteen ninety-five until today, and you picked up on some information that's not in the application document, it's not presented by the applicant, if you're going to discuss that as part of the cross-examination, you should source it.
Right, right.
Right, so just be a little more thorough in that, you know, I was doing my own research using Google Earth or whatever, and I noticed that historically there's been some changes in use of your rear yard. You had a patio, you got rid of it, you had a deck, you had this, you had that. You know, could you walk us through all that? Because it was unclear when I looked at.
That also comes into play like when we had Strongly Hotel, when they said, "We have pre-existing non-conformings eating outside." Well, you could have gone on some website or some historic site and looked at pictures of whatever that looked like. So, that would have come into play then, because sometime, you know, people are saying, "Well, it's a pre-existing use. It's a pre-existing historical use of that property." And that we, any board member or anybody could have gotten information off a computer.
Or if you were to pull the information from a prior application on the property.
Right.
That was not submitted by the applicant.
Right.
Right, you were to go down to Deb's office and ask for any other records of a prior approval in two thousand and three. If you're gonna reference something you know from those, from imagery or something, then you should.
Normally Deb's good at that. She'll pull those out and give them to us.
Make it part of the packet.
Yeah. That would, if it's in Deb's purview, we know about it. But I, you know, what does everybody think about, you know, the, the bylaws, the way they're on and the changes we've discussed?
Let me just ask one question. I'm a little unclear on the.
Which?
Which one?
We're back on two four, two four nine.
Yes.
So, your comment on the, on the right says, "We don't have to disclose personal knowledge," but the bylaw says we do have to disclose personal knowledge.
So, I'm saying.
Which way is it?
Wait, there's a body of case law indicating that board members need to put personal knowledge on the record if they are relying on such information or under a decision. No, I'm saying you do need to, to put it on the record, Tom.
You need to put it on the record.
You do, yes.
Okay, whatever it may be.
Right.
Okay.
Anything, if it's informing your decision, it's a fact that you're aware of, that's out, that happened outside of this hearing, yeah, you need to put it on the records of the applicant. Not just the applicant, but even an objector would have a chance to.
Or your fellow board members.
Or fellow board members as well, yeah, to their benefit. But, you know, legally, it's like due process, right? If you're relying on facts that are completely outside of the scope of what was testified to.
Okay.
You know, you're denying them due process.
We're allowed to do our own research and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. I've always done that.
Absolutely. As long as we just call it what we want.
Chris, we, we had ShopRite a few years back, and I don't think the board said, "Oh, I shop there, I shop there, I shop there." Been there, go around the building.
I said that. I said.
We had guidance from the attorney. We had guidance from the attorney on that.
Yeah.
Are we all relied on that?
Yes, and I, I came out and said it. I said, "We, we all understand we shop at ShopRite."
Yes.
But we're not, you know, we, we don't consider that a conflict because it's not a personal.
Same thing with the Sterling Hotel, same thing with the ShopRite. It was always said. It's always said by, by Ed or the attorney.
Yeah, because, you know, we want to point out that it's a pub, it's, it's open to the public. Anyone can go there. As long as we don't have a financial interest in it, we're not benefiting from it. We didn't buy stock in it.
Okay.
But, does, aside from, I don't know if we made any changes.
I think the only change is adding some language regarding social media.
Okay, so with that said, and the changes.
Wait, didn't Ed, didn't you want to strike the, on, what is it, three colon one dash one, the grounds?
Yeah, I was.
Or remove all the, the sub-paragraphs?
What's, what?
I, I kind of agree that the sentence that ends the paragraph before kind of does temper that. It just says, doesn't mean it's something to be.
I know it does temper that, but I'm just a little concerned.
Says, "May or may not, may include or."
Right, these are just, I guess.
So, just scrub everything from "such conduct may include" on down and then just kind of leave it as, you know, somewhat ambiguous, but.
Hold on, man.
Yeah.
That is, I don't mind. I don't, I just don't like those.
Oh, two and three.
Yeah, I don't mind three, because that, that you can quantify, but flag, flag, well, maybe we just reword that.
Well, you have the word "may." They may include. It's not, it's not an exclusive list.
Yeah, but I, I, I feel uncomfortable about flagrant violations of these rules because some rules are less important and I don't want to.
If you were to go back to the ethical rule.
Right.
Violation of, whatever that sub-section is.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we could just modify that to make it.
Flagrant violation of rules as per section, whatever.
Yeah, I can tighten these up a little bit.
Yeah, because, you know, okay.
Flagrant or egregious.
Yeah, but somebody's rules are.
Yeah, you're getting into like a penny. That's, that's kind of the problem with this.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to leave it up to somebody's interpretation of which rule and what's flagrant.
And I think this and you think that.
Yeah, right.
You wore a wrinkled, you wore a wrinkled shirt.
Yeah, right.
Tuck your shirt in.
Well, I think, don't you think that violation of the ethical rules would be ground, remove, that's concrete. It doesn't need to be flagrant.
But I want, right, I want, that, that tightens it up a little bit. That makes it which rule you're talking about, not the.
And it's still just an.
Not the penny rule.
And at the end of the day, this is just a recommendation to the Township Committee, which then would look at it and say, "Well, we don't think that's flagrant," or "We don't think that."
Exactly, right, yeah.
I think this is just for us.
Really a little disruptive.
Again, the standard is.
We're not taking a person out back and shooting them. You know, that's the Township Committee's job. You're right, absolutely.
Right, again, the standard is that it has to be something that's substantially disadvantaging the public. That's how it has to be viewed.
But just tighten that one.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, other than that, is there anything else that we, I think, I think you did a good job on these.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Combined with what we had and what you.
A lot of help from your vice chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Thank you. Well, you know, sometimes we, that's how we did the first set, but we were, we didn't have the benefit of, of really, you know, attorney that was into it. So, we basically did it on our own.
I like doing like the legislative side of things.
I think we did a darn good job in the first ones.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, hundred percent, yeah.
And, you know, now you, you have the opportunity to see other people's boards, which helped us in the wording of it.
I, I was still on time. This is going to be, when this is all said and done, this is going to be the new gold standard that at least I'm going to use.
There you go. There you go. And I think we, you're gonna pass a commission on that, right?
What's also good is any new member, you give them a copy of this right away and they start to get a flavor.
That's, that's one of the reasons I wanted to do this, because people come on the board and they're totally lost as to the procedures or to what to expect or what expected of them. This will give them a guideline. And when they read this, they'll understand a little bit more about how to conduct themselves and what a board. how to conduct themselves and what a board does. And, and that along with the other information and going to the, whatever those classes are, will help a person be more, feel more comfortable as, as they sit, they sit here. So, yeah, thank you.
Of course, I'm just doing my job, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll-
Yeah, so we'll sign that up.
Yeah, and, and get rid of all this other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, get rid of all the bolts and, you know.
All right, is there anything else? What's coming up next, Deb?
In two weeks, you have another two applications that are doing additions with, and they exceed their impermeable coverage.
Oh, I love that, yes, we have lots of impermeable coverage.
Lots of impermeable coverage to shoot.
What's, what kind of additions?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. But where they, you know?
Well, I also got two new applications on my desk literally in the last 24 hours, so.
The kind that increase the square footage at home?
No, but I meant, no, I meant on a bedroom, kitchen, decks, you know, I have them.
All of the above.
All of the above, okay.
Senior suites.
Yes, senior suites.